We'd like to call the Richmond City School Board to order Monday, June nineteenth. Madam Clerk?
To the board, Mr. President, please just find Ms. Dorr.
Here.
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Ms. Miss Erv.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Ms. Kajfie.
Yes.
Ms. March Carter. Ms. Owen.
Here.
Ms. Peady. Ms. Page.
Here.
You have a call, Madam Chair.
Next item.
The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Call if I'm wrong.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Next item.
Is there anyone who needs interpreter services?
Good evening. Anyone who needs interpreter services in Spanish, I'm willing to help. Buenas noches. Si alguno necesita servicio de interpretación en español, por favor déjate sumar y haga me saber y estaré más dispuesto para interpretar. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the addition of the agenda, and I do have several changes. One is to move item four point zero one, which is receive the findings of the division level review and discuss the memorandum of understanding to a later time in your meeting, possibly eight. So, once you move that, if you just want to quickly go through the agenda. The next item is to add received for action the Sprint One Million Project. And under your consent agenda, your school safety and crisis management report are the same, so we can take off the school safety report. And remove the school health advisory report because the board has not been established at this point. Those are the only changes I have.
Where is the Sprint one?
Sprint will be item five point zero seven.
Any motion?
So move, so we amend the agenda.
So move. It's been moved by Ms. Dorr and seconded by Ms. Ford to amend the agenda as received. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing that we have known, the amended agenda has been amended as received.
The next item on the agenda is item two, recognitions.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As we prepare for these recognitions, when we were called forward, a couple things. One is if you could come up to the front here to my right and left, this first, you know, this large group. And then two, don't leave until Communications Department has chance to get your picture. So we all need to be able to read this. The first recognition that we have today has to do with the Rule of Law Essay Contest. We would like to present a certificate of appreciation to the following. The certificate is awarded to Shana Sykes, hope I said that correctly, from Huguenot High School. It states in recognition as a winner of the Rule of Law Essay Contest signed June nineteenth, twenty seventeen, by the school board chair and the superintendent, Ms. Sykes here. Is someone? A representative, a representative from Huguenot also.
She's talking.
Ah, okay. Joining Ms. Sykes also with the real mail from John Marshall High School. I'm sorry, I did not recognize our esteemed, Your Honor here joining us, so I hope this page will allow her to say a few words.
Certainly.
Joining us also for a certificate regarding the Rule of Law Day would be Michelle Johnson from Beauchamp Middle School. We have Ayesha Jones from Howard Kill Middle School. If you could give all of our recipients for the Rule of Law.
All right, so you want me to read the whole thing?
I don't know what the whole thing looks like, so if you might guess.
It's very brief, please.
Yeah, so if I remember correctly, the prompt was, should victims of bullying be able to take extra measures to protect themselves? And in my essay response, I wrote, bullying is best described as a repeated physical and psychological dominance over another individual, who is defenseless. When a person is subject to such rough, inhumane treatment for long periods of time, it begins to affect them psychologically. They begin to feel isolated and lonely. They begin to lose trust in people and become afraid of expressing their experiences with anyone, especially the people who are most suited to help them. Because they'll repeatedly watch people who could have helped them walk away. In their eyes, no one on the planet, there's no one on the planet who truly cares about them. The biggest problem with bullying is that the psychological control that the bully has over the victim is so strong that the victim begins to lose their voice. They can receive help if they can reach a trustworthy adult or someone in a position of authority, but they're too afraid to seek the help that they need. However, when asked should victims of bullying be able to take extra measures to protect themselves, the answer should be no. Not because it would not help them protect themselves, but because it could potentially make the situation worse. If victims of bullying were able to take extra precautions towards protecting themselves, such as brandishing a weapon, then the whole new problem, then a whole new problem would be presented to the youth of the world. A lot of traumatized youth will be allowed to carry weapons around and be protected under the law, which is another significant issue. No one wants their child to be bullied. However, no one wants to hear that their child was trucked at school today and has to be rushed to the hospital with possible head trauma because the school had reasons to believe that their child was bullying another child. Given the chance, a victim with a weapon will feel more empowered by it and see it as a means of revenge rather than a means of protection. They will seek the bully out and attempt to make him feel like a victim. This scenario will only succeed in orchestrating effective power and damage additional school violence. Another possible outcome of a bully victim carrying a weapon in self-defense is that they will still be empowered by the bully, overpowered by the bully, I'm sorry. If a bully discovers that his or her victim has a weapon, they're likely to be anchored, and that could drive them to harm the student much worse. Some of the greatest and most influential hu- human beings to grace this earth have showed us that violence is never the answer, including Dr. Ryan Luther King Jr., who stated, returning violence for violence multiplies violence, adding deeper darkness to a night already devoid of stars. Instead, allowing victims to carry weapons, it would be best to reform the way that the school officials are taught to deal with bullying so that students will be more comfortable with coming to them for help. All students, but especially the victims of bullying, need to be reminded that their voice may be their most powerful weapon. An open school environment may make the bullies, may even make the bullies feel more comfortable with talking to school officials about their own problems, which could sway them away from harming other students and deal with the roots of their frustrations. Bullying is a constant problem that dates back to the non-humanity in one form or another. It's always been hard to contain because of the non-snitch culture of the population and the pure psychological dominance of the victim. But it can be solved with a non-violent approach. That approach is performed.
Any representative from the school who would like to join their students in the picture? Please go for it. Yes. Get everybody, does that work? It's my new set of gloves. Good?
One, two.
Thank you all for having our students here this afternoon. What you just saw was a collaboration between the Supreme Court of Virginia and CIS in schools and the Richmond Public Schools in coordination with the Wrightville Public Schools. We host three hundred students each year in our Rule of Law program, and we host a writing contest where we ask the students to voice their opinions to you with regard to a subject that we select. And our subject this year was the intersection between bullying and the policy of zero tolerance as it relates to bullying. And as you heard, our first place winner expressed very eloquently his opinions with regard to that subject. So we appreciate your support. We look forward to doing this again with you next year, and thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
She didn't mention it, but I hope everyone realizes that's one of our Supreme Court justices. It's a bit out of our schedule. Give her another round of applause. The next recognition involves Armstrong High School. The first certificate of appreciation, the certificate is awarded to the following students. This one is Demetrius Morgan of Armstrong High School, in recognition, a first place winner in the dragster design. Anyone for Armstrong? In recognition as a gold winner in the state T-shirt design from Armstrong in Skills USA competition is Dana G. Also from Armstrong is Erica Taylor. A bronze winner in the point application process in Skills USA competition. Recognition for Franklin Military Academy. This recognition and certificate of appreciation goes to Cadet First Lieutenant Christopher Wilkins of Franklin Military Academy for exhibiting outstanding qualities of leadership, patriotism, citizenship, and being selected as a battalion F-three for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen academic year. Also joining us from Franklin Military, we want to recognize Cadet First Lieutenant Leandre Singleton for being selected as the battalion commander of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen academic year. Not going on from the front?
They're all CTE.
They're all CTE?
Yeah.
Okay, we gonna have to probably get in the margin group? They fit up here. So you gonna make arrangements for them outside somewhere? Usually you have it, Cadet, Wilkins couldn't be here, he's actually joined the military today, so he goes to make some arrangements. So he's second. Except the both. Currently gonna do a pretty good shot, afterwards, we get in with my CTE. Also from my CTE department, we want a certificate of appreciation with regard to the FCC LA, a Virginia winner and national recipient of George Wood High School. Are you?
Yeah.
Oh, I got a standard. Also from George Wood High School, the second place winner on the three D animation team is Juan Saba. Representing Huguenot High School, an FCC LA, Virginia winner and national recipient is Sierra Austin. Is that Sierra, or parents? Teacher?
Teacher.
Yes, the teacher. I think this is Patagonia. Austin, also from Huguenot High School. Second place winner on the three D animation team of Huguenot High School is Bryant Aquino. The FCC LA, Virginia winner and national recipient, Zaire Brown of Huguenot High School. A silver winner in bargaining, bargaining design in the Skill USA competition is Kasia Kathy. First place winner in transportation modeling is Zafar Carmel. The FCC LA, Virginia winner and national recipient, Kayleen Johnson from Huguenot High School. Second place winner on the three D animation team, Christian Bolados Alou. And we have a silver winner in graphic sublimation and Skill USA competition, Facyan Nuterol. John Marshall High School. For performing outstanding community service by doing a national commercial for the prevention of suicide for violence, we want to recognize Edward Bouvier from John Marshall High School. Do you want to give it to John Marshall? Tommy Johnson, who is the senior art instructor in the history department of the academy. From Tommy Jefferson High School, of FCC LA, Virginia winner and national recipient, Erica Black. This recognition goes to the school, in recognition for earning the number two spot in the nation in the two thousand seventeen, one hundred best wise high schools teaching personal finance. The certificate is awarded to Franklin Military Academy. That is a correction, it should say number twenty-two, the week, senior number two. So this certificate is actually awarded in recognition for earning the number two spot in the nation for personal finance in the best wise competition, Richmond Community High School. The next certificate of appreciation goes to Richmond Technical Center. The certificate of appreciation is awarded to Sylvia Muller, the culinary arts instructor in Richmond Technical Center, for being a two thousand seventeen advisor mentor award recipient by achieving the level of master. Bobby, is that so? Okay. Y'all, she has good food. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, with all of your CTE award recipients, we need to step outside and get Mrs. Bowers, so she can try to get your pictures taken. Thank you so much.
Next item.
The next item is public information, and we have several speakers who have signed up.
During this period, if you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, you have five minutes.
Monica. Monica McLean.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Treffey. For fourteen years, I have welcomed children into my classroom. Some spoke perfectly English, some spoke not.
We have speakers that have signed up that we need to call first, please.
Oh.
Is Monica McLean present?
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Monica McLean, and I am the librarian at James H. Blackwell Elementary. I am here this evening because several of our colleagues and parents have signed a petition. The situation at hand is that our principal, Dr. Scott, has served as the principal of James H. Blackwell for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year. He has studied the needs of our school and is working to make improvements to basically help turn our school around. This year, there has been a focus on increased instruction in the classroom, professional development, and grants that he's authorized have actually been awarded. I'm excited about that, spending some of that money. So, we're basically working as a team to help turn our school around and basically try to move our school from being considered as priority to passing. Dr. Scott has interviewed and applied to remain as our principal, and he recognizes, just like the rest of us do, that in order to effect long-term change, we need staff and we need leadership that is willing to remain in the building and serve. It has come to our attention that Dr. Scott has been advised that they'd like to move him to another building, and basically we're petitioning to try to keep our principal at our school. Many of our children come to school reeling from the transitions and trauma in their personal lives, and this is one of the few places where there is somewhat of a semblance of normalcy, with us being a priority school and a lot of time outside of work spent trying to move our school. Our teachers get knocked out and we have a high staff turnover. So, we're essentially, you know, trying to keep our leadership, trying to keep our teachers there, and it starts at the top. In any case, we have a petition signed by our parents and signed by the staff because we really want to keep our principal at our school, and he wants this staff. So, that's why several of us have shown up this evening. So, should I give this to her?
Yes. Either side would be okay.
Yeah, I think it's important, we want to continue to help the path of progress under his leadership, so we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the audience, please refrain from clapping. If you want to clap, express clapping by. Thank you.
Sally Hamilton. Sally Hamilton.
Can they hear the back?
Yes.
That includes the list of speakers who signed up.
Is there other members in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Please do so, excuse me, do so at this time. Say your name and sign in.
Good evening, my name is Janie Harrison. And I female speechwriter in my issue. And that's it. I was employed, my issue, I was employed with RPS. August 1998 in a continuing contract teacher original close school the year 2001 until retirement in 2012. I met with the superintendent, Dr. Benton, David Myers, and Mrs. Fisher. On December 19th, 2016, at 10:00 AM to discuss why RPS didn't pay the 5% to VRS for the months of May 09 and June 09. Dr. Benton discovered that RPS didn't pay the 5% to VRS for the months of May and June of 09 while I was placed on leave without pay. Dr. Benton requested that Mrs. Mr. Myers pay me for the two months aforementioned for continuing contract teachers are not placed on leave without pay. Mr. Myers has not honored the request of Dr. Benton until this day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Carrie Tredway. For 14 years I have welcomed children into my classroom. Some spoke perfect English, some spoke not. Some came well-fed with a matching lunchbox and some came hungry or tired or both. No two years have been the same since I first began teaching kindergarten in first grade. I am usually one of the first teachers for all of my children. I spend an enormous amount of time setting the right tone and creating a culture of family. My classroom is most successful when I am closest to my students and their parents so I can understand their needs and measure their success. Here's something important that I've noticed over the last 14 years. The new policies and programs and then the abandoning of those. The constant updating of how we will measure academic success in our students. The relentless pursuit of reforms and testing innovations and new layers of accountability have diluted my ability to create a personalized learning environment. It seems to me that with each new administration and elected school board, there's a redefinition of measures of student and teacher success. Instead of relentlessly pursuing responsible, fully funded budgets, we digress into ways to decentralize, privatize, and economize. Here's what suffers. My students' access to consistent and equal programming, teacher retention and quality, and parental engagement. Every single teacher in RPS understands the importance of collaboration. We collaborate with our principals, our parents, our team. We teach our students to collaborate, problem solve, and determine what's missing. The problem with the compact isn't the stated intent to collaborate. The problem is that by collaborating in this way, it adds an additional layer of government, divesting the community of their power over our democratically elected school board and city council. Instead of those people most intimate with the schools and families reaching out to our partners and debating their role in the public setting, the mayor will determine who comes to the table and which solutions we will debate. I will not argue that more people engaged in understanding the realities of students' experience in RPS is a good thing, it is. But our city system is set up so that the school board in consultation with teachers, parents, students, and principals owns that power to bring the parties to the table. In his first communication about education in the schools, Mayor Stony acknowledges he will seek to quote "take advantage of every nonprofit, private sector, and philanthropic option available," end quote. My concern is that this is exactly the first step that other cities have taken when they develop their compacts. First, collaboration. Second, the mayor decides which partners come to the table, most of them promising increased achievement based on new measures. Third, private partners are invited to collaborate. Fourth, decisions about programs, measurement, and student achievement now rest in the hands of these partners and not the elected officials and community. I would ask all of you to take some time to research what compacts look like across the country before voting on any resolution. We would welcome the mayor's promised efforts to begin addressing the concentrations of poverty that plague our students' neighborhoods. We would also welcome his efforts to create a more robust and accurate state funding model. I'm ready to walk arm in arm across the street to the general assembly now and advocate for our fair share. We thank him for his commitment to rehabilitating our facilities and helping to champion the successes of RPS. Let's collaborate and ideashare and offer assistance between different departments and agencies. But let's not create a new level of bureaucracy in the process. Let's hold true to a strong democratically elected school board and a mayor and staff that have their backs when it comes to funding their fair share. Let's empower the community inherent, not the partners, that will surely promise extraordinary student success if we just give them a chance. Here's what I've learned in my 14 years. Strong principals empowering their teachers, comprehensive funding, engaged families, that's what builds strong and successful students.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Benton, Madam Chair, and Honorable School Board members. My name is Brianna Nomi and I come to you this evening to speak about the mayor's proposed education compact. I have been following the compact very closely. I was excited about it when it was first announced and immediately began to explore the compact document for all of the potential it promised. What I found was a well-intentioned whole-child inspiration but seemingly disconnected stakeholders. The institutionalized collaboration we also desperately want to see appears to be structured in a way that gives individuals with no educational background or expertise a seat at the table next to those whose lives are directly impacted by the conversations taking place in those meetings. Some of you know my story. I was an RPS teacher for 10 years and I left after feeling and experiencing disempowerment for way too much of my time teaching. I've spent the last year studying education, from theory to case studies and interviews with teachers who have felt the same way I felt in public education. A major thread throughout my research is that teachers' empowerment in agency to be the best teacher they can be and to affect the most academic growth in their students diminishes when they are not included in conversations, when they aren't invited to the table from the beginning. Adding to teachers' decreased sense of empowerment is when they are handed programs that are guaranteed to provide results. By individuals who do not understand the context, their students, their administration, the support services in their school, or lack thereof. And the list goes on and on. And I do not blame these teachers, I would not buy into these suggestions either. Because let's be real, if you have not taught, did not attend, or do not send your kids to Richmond Public Schools, you simply cannot know all of those into the profession of teaching. All of this is to say that while I respect and support the collaborative intent of this compact, I am concerned about the implications inherent in its structure. I worry that like teachers, you as a board will become disempowered. I know defenders of the compact declare that the compact team has no formal policymaking power, but the power of suggestion is very strong. And with all that sits on this board's plate, I am concerned that the suggestions brought forth from the compact team will drive the conversation. Rather than the conversation being driven by our educational administration. My disempowerment grew over time and as a result of perhaps the most well-intentioned reforms. I encourage the board to fully and wholeheartedly collaborate with the city council and the mayor's office. But as you are the ones charged with making decisions for the good of RPS stakeholders, I encourage you to recognize your responsibility and protect the power with which the citizens of this city have entrusted you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Victoria Carl and I'm founder of RBA Optel. I'm also a Richmond City Public Schools teacher and have been in Richmond City since 2001. And one thing that I have learned over my tenure in teaching is that rhetoric changes nothing. Rhetoric in a form, in a document, in speeches, is just that, it is just words. What we need is action. We need leadership and collaboration in authentic and real ways. The education compact provides rhetoric. And it doesn't provide necessarily anything but an additional level of bureaucracy and nullifies your own power to help shape and lead our city's schools. I'm concerned and suspicious of those that are at the table writing this document who do not have the knowledge or the professionalism, having been inside teaching Richmond City Public Schools, to be drafting something so important for our city. I'm excited beyond measure that we have a mayor and a school board and a city council that is putting education first. But I am worrisome that the rhetoric is overtaking action. Please take your time, put your efforts, finding this leadership that is committed to helping teachers and students in this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Emma Clark and I'm an eighth grade teacher of Bushell Middle School. I began working with supportive schools but today I just want to speak on behalf of myself. I want to first say that I voted enthusiastically for Mayor Stony because I believe that he understands that education is the most important thing that our government offers to its citizens. I think he understands that education enrichment is particularly important. I'm excited about the compact that he has put forward. It pushes for desperately needed increase in collaboration and it helps set the right framework for addressing education enrichment. By that, I need to say that it recognizes that we cannot make meaningful change in our classroom or progress with our children until we're addressing their needs outside of classroom. However, we know that Mayor Stony is not writing this compact on his own and I'm concerned that other interests have made their way discreetly into this document. One of the primary authors of this document is Eva Cohen. I'm deeply unhappy that she's chosen as the policy expert for this document and further angered that her role is being hidden from the public. However, I'm not surprised. Ms. Cohen is a product of private schools in Norfolk who taught two years at a highly selected military academy in Philadelphia with Teach For America, which she tried very hard to bring to RPS. I want you all to know something that has become a sad tradition for me each year. At the end of every school year, my kids ask me the same question. They ask, "Are you coming back or are you leaving?" My kids are in eighth grade so we know that they're moving on to high school and they won't see me in the hallways regardless. But even so, it's deeply important to them just to know that I'm still on RPS, know that I'm still in a classroom at their middle school. It brings them comfort. It brings them comfort because they're so used to turnover. I bring this up because Teach For American teachers abandon our kids across the country in droves. Few of them remain as teachers and even fewer remain in high poverty schools. It's an organization that puts graduates in prestigious universities in the hardest classrooms in America with almost no training, sending a clear message that it doesn't take that much to be a teacher. Then it allows these people to inflict their savior complex on our kids, exploit them for a resume booster, and say goodbye to public education forever. This is the type of reform that Ms. Cohen tried to bring to our students previously. Now she comes to us as the founder of the Virginia Chapter of Fit to Can, which strongly pushes for the growth of charter schools and Betty DuVose's favorite voucher programs. The compact's sure enrichment is modeled on ones that brought charters to other cities. Do we really think that she doesn't have an agenda here? I understand that Ms. Cohen is intelligent and knows a lot about education policy, but she doesn't have happy insight of an RPS teacher. I'm disappointed once again that nobody saw, get to ask educators in RPS how to do education for RPS. I'm pro-education reform as well. I want to see discipline move away from suspensions and towards restored injustice. But step one in education reform is to ask actual educators, what problems do you have in your classroom? What's keeping you from helping your kids get the things that they need? Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with everything said before me. Good evening, I'm Kirsten Gray, member of Alliance for Progressive Virginia and a parent of two Richmond Public School children. I'm in agreement collaboration can begin now between board, council, mayor, on school funding, facilities, and children's cabinet. And that a document such as a compact is not needed or needly rushed. We wish for school board to focus on a search for a strong qualified superintendent with community input before formulizing the compact, especially where instruction and academia is concerned. We appreciate you hearing and reading our comments, however, our concerns are only addressed in the reader's guide to the compact. But must be addressed in the compact itself. We don't know who our next governor will be, so now more than ever. Excuse me. We don't know who our next governor will be, so now more than ever, our public schools must be safeguarded from privisation, charter expansion, and replication, and being imposed onto our neighborhoods. The mayor has indicated the compact will go beyond your terms in office, so it is of utmost importance to get this right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ralph Westfam here as a member of Richmond Forward. It's interesting what the comments were given before here. I read your State Department of Education review of the RPS that documents the sad state of affairs of public education in the capital city. The sad state is no surprise to anyone, but least of all to the current superintendent or the previous school board who hired the superintendent precisely because they were seeking someone to address the exact sad state of affairs. Address them is precisely what he endeavored to do since day one. He's the one who initiated the state review just a little over a year after his arrival. He requested it to provide a thorough review as one more element of input in preparing and modifying a comprehensive plan to address the problems. He assembled a team within six months of his arrival in January of 2014, most notably, it is his team led by a top instructional leader, Dr. Kane, who was attracted here by Dr. Benton. That prepared within the first year of an extremely comprehensive and transparent academic improvement plan. That AIP was integrated into the budget development process of his first full budget, which was FY16, and it was partially funded by the city in that year. The city explicitly requested the document to benchmark with benchmarks in order to fund it. But they declined to fund it any further in 17 and 18. The first two years were spent developing the plan and assembling his team. Everyone knows that the second most critical influence and determinant of success in a school, as attested to here tonight, after the classroom teacher, is the principal. It took nearly two years to learn the school leadership and then allow for a fair and corrective action plan to weed out those who were not leading effectively. All of the secondary and at least a third of the elementary principal schools have turned over since his arrival. Some occurred through retirement, but the majority because of the focus on action for improvement. The single biggest determinant of superintendent's success is whether a school board can serve in a proper role as a policymaking board and evaluate the superintendent on the implementation of that policy. Boards that micromanage or try to serve as administrators by protecting certain staff or trying to usurp the staffing selection process, especially principals, will undermine the potential for effectiveness. I've watched this happen over my 35 years in multiple divisions. It leads to failure every time. And boards listen to their people out of the schools, they listen to rumors, and they try to manage it themselves and go around the superintendent, it leads to failure. The board should have been looking to see what has been accomplished by this administration before making a decision to change the leadership. It would be a travesty to use a state review that this superintendent requested as input to augment his action plan and act like it provides any justification for the action taken by this board to terminate the superintendent. It would be cruel irony because the tool that was used to serve as additional input for determining focus for improvement was delivered to this board after this board decided the superintendent should not be allowed adequate time for implementation. When I say adequate time, one thing I know that's real irony is that your new MOU from the State Department, you know how long it's giving you to achieve full accreditation in the schools? Do you know the date? 2026, 10 years. So you had 10 years, but yet this person here. So, you had ten years, but yet this person here was given less than three years and said, "Oh, actually, what the accomplishments weren't sufficient." And also on the mayor's endeavor to reduce poverty by fifty percent. And poverty and achievement, education are inextricably linked. There's no two ways about it. And this city is strapped with kids that are seventy-five percent of them are in poverty. The city has given themselves thirteen years to reduce that poverty by fifty percent. But you've got to achieve a hundred percent accreditation within ten years. And yet we're taking action here and saying that actions weren't sufficient within three years. It's a recipe for failure if you continue on that path. So now you've reset the clock to near zero. Yes, a new superintendent will benefit from the work of this superintendent and the State Department review that he requested. A new superintendent will benefit significantly from the evaluation work and leadership changes that Dr. Ben has made. Yes, a new superintendent will benefit from all this, but will nonetheless, just like Dr. Ben, require time to assemble his team and become familiar with the nuances in the landscape of RPS and maybe Virginia, depending on who you select. This school board should be focused on the state review component that cited the lack of a vision statement. It should focus on allowing the next superintendent to be the administrator. And equally important, to commit to allowing sufficient time to achieve results. Lastly, and most importantly, should be recognized that the education problem is far greater than the school system. It's good that Mayor Stony recognizes the need for a cross-departmental approach to solving the problem, but also needs to realize it's going to take more money to be successful. There are number four per capita spending in the state in general government, public safety and economic development. It's time to recognize that you need to save for education. It's true that money alone does not guarantee success, but it's a generality, but the lack of money in a high poverty environment has little guaranteed failure.
Thank you.
Good evening, school board. Chair, Dr. Ben, all of the school board members. My name is Charlotte Hare and I'm president of the Richmond Education Association. Tonight I stand before you as one of my probably last duties as president of the education association. So my first order of business tonight is to introduce you to the incoming president of the Richmond Education Association. It is with great pleasure that I present to you, probably in the history of REA, we have elected Mr. A. Ramon Moore as president starting next school year, 2017 to 2018. We are thrilled to have him on board and I am expecting and knowing that he will continue in the same vein. Now, I don't want you to think that you are not going to get to see my face at all these lovely late night school board meetings. I will still be here. I do want to take a moment though to have you consider some things. You've heard a lot of information tonight. And on the last school board meeting, I gave you some additional information to think about. I want you to think about what it is that we're facing. Many people are not remembering where or how we got where we are. And they're not remembering what has been said over and over again about where we are. The state of education in Richmond is not in a good place. We have not been here for quite some time. Many people are not remembering from whence we come. We're better than what we were, but we're still not where we should be. And so people need to take some time, read the information that has been put out, and understand that everyone in the city of Richmond is going to have to stand together, shoulder to shoulder, and do what is right for the children of this city. I have not said enough times, and I will continue to say, it's time for people to start asking the people who know what they're doing, ask the professionals what it is that we need to do for our children. If you've never taught, if you've never been in school since the day that you walked out of your high school, and even if you just walked out of high school, it is a difference in being able to teach our children. If you haven't worked with our children in Richmond, but you've worked with children in other places, it's still a different place that you need to understand so that you can work with our children, our families, and our communities. So, the compact, I said what I needed to say on that the last time. I still tell you, you need to do your research. You need to do your research. There needs to be a clear understanding as to as power. And what it is is going to be measured. Because the real deal is, is that many things you will not have very much say-so about. You're going to be told what has to be done. And the community and the parents, and everybody needs to understand that. And it's time for everybody to put up or shut up. Our children have gone too long. And it's time for some real action and real work. I hope this word of collaboration is not just a word. And I hope that city council is about the business of being collaboratively, working with you. I know that the former meetings that were had between school board and city council, I was there and I know what it looked like to me and it was not collaboration. It was like the school system had to put on a dog and pony show and beg for money to do what everybody knows that we need to do. So I hope that things will change. I'm going to be watching. I'm still going to be there. But we need to start having conversations about what it is that we really need to do. How many more generations of children do we need to lose? How many more families are waiting for something good to happen for their children? The same thing that happens in my building, which is Richmond Community, should be happening in every single building in this school. And it doesn't make sense that we can't do it. So we need to get to work. Everybody needs to get to work. I'm going to hold everybody accountable. I'm going to start keeping a score. So if you say that you're about public education and you interview with REA political action, I'm going to hold you accountable for making sure that you hold up that banner. Not only you, but I'm going to hold city council accountable. I'm going to hold the mayor accountable. If you got a recommendation from REA PAC, then I'm saying to you, you best be about the business of the children of Richmond. Because I'm going to let everybody know if you're not. Fair is fair. If you love the children and you said you're going to do it, then I'm going to hold you to task and make sure that you do. And if you don't, the public will know. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ingrid Daru. I am the Communities and Schools Site Coordinator at George Mason Elementary School. And I'm going to ask my George Mason family to stand up as I represent them. George Mason Elementary School has been educating children for close to a hundred years. Our school can proudly say that Doug Wilder, Henry Marsh, and Nadine Marsh Carter have all attended George Mason. However, the facility no longer supports the student-teacher learning environment. Currently, we have very few functional bathrooms. On our fifth grade hallway, we have one working stall for over one hundred and fifty fourth and fifth grade girls. This same bathroom has had continual issues leaking into the classroom below it. For our second grade girls, of six stalls, four have doors, none have a lock. The toilets leak, leaving a constant wet floor. When the sinks work, students have to wash without soap because there are no soap dispensers. The worst bathrooms are in our basement. All of our bathrooms have a continual stench of urine that is permanently embedded in the walls and floors. It can be smelled immediately upon entering our school. Beyond the bathrooms, our classrooms do not have climate control. Some classrooms are stifling hot or freezing cold and do not correlate with the changing seasons. Students have to wear coats or bring water bottles to maintain their body temperature. Before our students eat breakfast in the classroom, teachers wipe down desks to remove rodent droppings. Mice have caused entire classrooms to have to be evacuated. One of the most challenging issues we face is the air quality. Although we have been told time and time again that the air we breathe daily at our school is not harmful, our students and staff continue to experience health issues, including sinus problems, headaches, lethargy, and breathing issues, including asthma. Some of our teachers wear breathing masks all day in order to continue to teach. I cannot stress to you enough that the building of George Mason is in a state of emergency. It is unsafe, unsanitary, and harmful to our students and staff. Please hear this. We are committed to creating a learning environment that allows each student to be successful and achieve academically. However, it is increasingly challenging to provide this in a building that is falling apart. Please know that we care deeply for our students and they deserve the best building to learn in. We are open to your suggestions of how to build a better George Mason Elementary School. Whether that is to relocate temporarily or to a complete rebuild. Thank you so much from all of us.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Hartman. I'm speaking as an individual. Please don't listen to the naysayers regarding the compact. Actually, I take that back. Listen, but do not follow. People are forever confusing not being heard with not being followed. That I hear you does not automatically mean that I agree with you. Listening does not entail agreeing. I like the compact. I say, "Go for it." If changes are needed later, fine. This would be a working compact. No one is saying holy words carved in stone. Listening to the naysayers, what are they actually saying? Basically, all that has stuck between my ears so far, and this may be my failing, is that they do not trust. But how will waiting for a new superintendent create trust where trust is missing? It will not. Some say, "There must be a hidden intent. Somebody must be trying to take over something." On what basis do they say that? No basis in evidence exists that I know of. There is indeed a national trend of mayors trying to take over schools and trying to supplant school boards. Is this trend nefarious? I hold that it is very nefarious. Does it follow that this is Mayor Stony's nefarious hidden intent? It does not. I see this compact as an alternative model to produce cooperation without producing takeover. We are at a magic moment. Going against those who say nay and those who say stall may cost you a lot of support. But you were not elected to go along, to get along. You were elected to serve the interests of the community in your absolute best judgment. It may even cost you reelection. But you were not elected to be reelected. You were elected to serve.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Ben. My name is Candace Willis. I'm with Advocates for Equity in Schools, a member of organization of dignity in schools, a national organization that dismantles the school to prison pipeline, specifically as it pertains to students of color and students with disabilities. First of all, I want to take this opportunity to welcome Dr. Anthony Walker as the Director of Special Education for RPS. In order for him to be able to do his job appropriately, you will need to terminate Dr. Boyd because she will be a stumbling block for him. I need to make that clear. He is a very gifted and very knowledgeable individual who really should have her job. So I'm letting you know that I'm in support of him. And anything that Dr. Boyd does to get in his way, I will be addressing that issue personally. Second of all, I do want to address the issue of the compact as well. Obviously, the speaker before we spoke from a clear place of ignorance. So I'm going to go ahead and get a little bit more deeper into the compact. Never, never, never should you make decisions about individuals without the individuals. That is not acceptable. That is what this compact constitutes. It constitutes individuals who are not in a classroom. And by the way, I'm a licensed educator and administrator, taught in public schools, private schools, detention centers, and even at Bonn. Also taught at the University of Richmond. So I've taught everywhere. And I have children in public school and I choose to send them there. When we have a compact that does have an agenda, it does have an agenda. And that agenda does not include our children. If it was open and transparent, then everyone would be able to participate and offer their input. However, it is not. It is an extension of the government that is excluding individuals who are stakeholders in the educational process, specifically educators, parents, and students. How can you make decisions about us without us? How can you make decisions about us without us? Why would you want to if you truly had our best interest at heart? Third of all, I'm going to address the issue of the disciplinary panels that I've been sitting in on for the last three weeks. Three months, I'm sorry. Unfortunately, and I need to say this out of love, our board members, you need to be educated on disciplinary practices as it relates to special education. The attorney that you have working with you, Ms. Lilly, I advise you, she's not competent in Virginia Code 8DAC 20-81-160, which specifically addresses the issue of discipline as it relates to students with special needs. I have sat repeatedly in panels, and I've heard you, Ms. Owens, blame the children for their disabilities and their behavior. That is clearly not a trauma-informed approach. This board requires training before you determine the lives of children, the outcomes of children's lives. You don't have it. I sat in the panel hearing myself. You don't have it. You're making decisions about children's lives and instead of giving them help, you're sending them to the school to prison pipeline on the fast track. You have to educate yourself. You cannot serve on a disciplinary panel and not understand Virginia Code 8DAC 20-81-160. You can't do it. You must learn it. And if Ms. Lilly is not going to advise you of it, learn it yourself. You're accountable. Our children deserve a chance. No child should come before the panel who has not been evaluated for special education services. No child. Ms. Dalton should be removed. She cannot even determine whether a child has an IEP before she presents the child to this board. She's not doing her job. We have to give our children every benefit of the doubt, including specifically our African-American male children with special needs. I hand it out to you, Virginia Code 8DAC 20-81-160, Section I, Part II, which specifically states, "In recording the crime, the local educational agency shall ensure that copies of special education special education records are transmitted with the child." You guys don't do that. So when they go into hearing's office, to the prosecutor's office, they don't even know that the child has a disability. And that is a mitigating circumstance in the law. That is something that Dr. Boyd, Ms. Dalton, this board is failing to do. That's a violation of the law. You were holding evidence. That policy needs to change. Our children deserve a chance. Our children deserve a chance. I know you're looking at the time, Ms. Lilly, but I've still got fifteen more seconds. Our children deserve a chance. And I will say we'll get rid of you, to be honest. Our children deserve a chance. And I'm going to keep on saying it. Our children deserve a chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the school board. I just went to church and I got the letter stating the death of my mother. I just received it on Sunday. And I want to thank the school board for that death of condolences. A condolences. I'm coming here to you today from...
Excuse me, state your name.
Roger Fuller. I'm coming to here today because I was looking at the new, um, the newspaper and also Channel 12 News, and I looked up and I saw a name, a very familiar name. It was Kenneth Payne. He's the new head football coach at Armstrong. But it behooves me that you all hired him, or they allowed him to hire him, when he got to fight, and the last time he was in 2007, he got to fight with the head football coach, Coach Robson. And I was on his staff. I witnessed it. So can't nobody say that it's not true. He got that fighting on the field in front of the children. Ultimately, they had to remove him from the stadium, and the next thing I know, he the head football coach, and he admitted that he was assistant coach. We have people, I mean, you have to do your due diligence, and you have to vet these people, and you got to go back and find out these things. I can't believe and it's missed that it wasn't in his, um, personnel file, because it happened. It was, and he got fired. He was relieved of his duties as the assistant football coach. So it's not something that should, it should be in his records. And if it's not, I don't understand why it isn't, because he was relieved. He didn't even last the whole season. He got removed. He was playing, I can tell you, he was playing handle for homecoming. It was a knockout, drag-out fight on the field. And another thing, and that bothers me, that I see him being a coach, but then, no one has done nothing for Bo Jones, when he had a stellar career, a stellar career. You made him, made him resign. No one's done anything about that. They made him resign. They didn't make the AD over at Armstrong resign. They gave him the job. He's still the AD over there. When I saw him last Friday, he still was doing his athletic director duties, and nobody's going to lose, going to quit that job and get, make less money, but you all allowed him to be the coach. It is a lot of things right here systematically that is not right. Get it right. Get it right before 2020, because I promise you, I promise each and every one of you that I'm going to hold you accountable. I'm going to hold you accountable. And I'll get it and blast you on Facebook, Twitter, or wherever, because it's atrocities and it's things are being committed against our children and our staffs.
Thirty seconds.
And everything that's going on, and nothing is being, no corrective measures is being done. What happened to Bo Jones was the injustice, uh, injustice. Dr. Ramsey shouldn't have been on that panel, or Ms. Collins should have been on that panel because of a conflict of interest. And how many times I got to say it? Conflict of interest. That was our subordinate and our colleague. And once again, get it right. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Do you have any other members in the audience that would like to speak at this time? If not, that's until our public information period. Thanks, guys. So board members, you have the draft document in your possession, and also it's on... So board members have that in their possession, and we will post it to Board Doc after tonight's meeting. So currently, just to give the public an update on where we are, the evaluation committee for the search firm is in process, and the committee will meet on Friday to select the search firm, and then the board will hold a special meeting on June 26th, and that meeting will be noticed for the board to, if they notice. And so the committee will make the recommendation for board approval. Also, we have the list of members on the search committee is a makeup of the fabric of RPS. We have members from academia, community, the business community, nonprofit, our teachers, parents, Richmond Council of PTA's, Richmond NAACP, representative from the athletic community, the fine arts community, support our schools. So again, the search committee is a good representation of RPS. We have previously held four community meetings where we received input from the community. Our first meeting was held at Hubert High School, followed by Oak Grove Bell Mead, John Marshall High School, and then ended at Martin Luther King Middle School. All four meetings were well-attended by the community. Individuals had an opportunity to respond to questions and to present, to give, to give their input as what they wanted to see in our next leader, the next superintendent. That information will be compiled, and we will update it, add it to the school website. So just to go over some of the primary activities for the superintendent's search, it will include drafting RFP for the superintendent's search firm, which was submitted on the 12th of May, publishing the RFP for the search firm, selecting the RFP for the evaluation committee, selecting interim superintendent, selecting, announcing the superintendent's search firm, which will take place on June 26th, and identifying, announcing members of the superintendent's search committee, which we have tonight, and again garnering the community input. The board has provided their input for the leadership profile as well as the community. We have received a wealth of information from the community regarding the superintendent. And one thing I would like to add, it was a common theme at the community meetings about the type of leader that we are looking for. Building relationships, communicator, approachable, traditional background, proven track record, just to, just to name some of the comments. And so once we continue to go through the process, interviewing candidates for the superintendent, the finalists for the candidates of superintendent, and then appointing the new superintendent. Also, we have an ad hoc committee, which we have four board members who are members of the ad hoc committee. We have Ms. Cosby, Ms. DeYoung, Ms. Minz-Erbe, and Ms. DeBarlow. And the function of the ad hoc committee, establish the superintendent's search timeline, collaborate with the Public Information Office and IT to develop superintendent's search website, solicit staff and community input through scheduled public forums, and which I just discussed. Um, be, the liaison to the search committee, providing information such as demographics, organization, organizational charts, number of schools, the makeup of our schools, and input from the community forums. So just a wealth of information and a lot of responsibility for the search, the ad hoc committee. So the superintendent's search committee, just to discuss that, the search, search committee can, may use, resume review, screening, effective group interviews, telephone reference checks, district visitation, team decision-making. This is the biggest response, one of the biggest responsibility of a board, is to hire a superintendent. This is something that we take very seriously. We're elected to do a job, and ultimately, it's the board's responsibility to hire the next superintendent. So at this time, feedback, comments from board members. Ms. Dorr.
Ms. Page, will we vote on the approval of this search process, or is this just a process?
Just to adopt it.
Okay. Might I propose that, and I don't know if this needs to be a resolution or not, that since we got...
Correction. Ms. Lewis, correct me. We voted on the sixth of June.
We voted on the sixth of June. Uh, to approve the search that we got today? Can I move that we...
Yeah, but the timeline...
Gotcha. Can I move that we... So we haven't... In light of the fact that it's not on board docs yet, and we got the documents today, may I move that we can vote on it on Monday, that's part of our special meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by... Write your motion. It's been moved by Ms. Dorr and seconded by Ms. DeBarlow. Any discussion? Hard question? And I have, um, I would like to add something. Just like to remind board members, we've had this document, April 30th, for board members to provide input. We received it again on the 18th of May for a second chance for input.
The motion was made by Ms. Dorr, seconded by Ms. DeBarlow to vote on the superintendent's search process at the special meeting on Monday, June 26th.
I just wanted to add, in light of the fact that we saw the draft in its current form today for the first time, I think it is appropriate for us to take a little time to digest it. Since we aren't having a discussion, it's coming Monday about the RFP process, which is directly related to the search firm, and while we got to discuss the search process, I encourage my colleagues to vote to, to vote on this.
Ms. Cosby?
None.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Minz-Erbe?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
No.
Motion passes five, yea to nay. Before we move to the next item, Ms. Page, there were some students who were inadvertently not called for recognition, and Ms. Smith has a list.
I reviewed the list, it was just one student, but it was also another recognition. Student was Erica Black, 12th grade from Thomas Jefferson, for Richmond Technical Center for SCC LA winner and national recipient. And then the other recognition was Mrs. Roberta Avocavo from Thomas Jefferson High School, and Mrs. Jennifer Powell, who's here, I believe, from Armstrong High School, business teachers who served on the Federal Reserve Teacher Committee 2016-17, and wanted to make sure that we recognized them.
This is Ms. Jennifer Powell from Armstrong.
Next item?
The next item is your board action items. Five point oh one received for action, the title two, part one, and title three, part A. Bring it.
My apologies. Good evening, Board members. We continue, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, here tonight in order to receive action on the Title Two federal programs grant addressing teacher and principal quality, as well as Title Three, Part A, English Language Learners' Application for Limited English Professions Students.
Ms. Owen?
I believe that we accept those documents that we received, but...
Need a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Dorr to receive the documents... I'm sorry, to approve the documents. Title two, part A.
And title three.
And title three, part A. Any discussion?
Motion was made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Dorr to approve the documents received for Title Two, Part A, and Title Three, Part A. Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Minz-Erbe?
Yes.
And Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, Owen. Thank you. The next item is five point zero... The next item is five point zero two, received for action, the establishment of a new gifted advisory council.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Bennet. I'm pleased to present to you, for approval, the recommendation of the gifted advisory council. You have those names in front of you. On May first, two thousand seventeen, Ms. Plevich and I presented the process and timeline for selection of a gifted advisory council who will develop our gifted education plan. Following the May meeting, debate board meeting, a nomination form or application was sent out to principals, gifted teachers, and presented to space family meetings. We were fortunate to be able to accept all of those who were interested and were nominated and applied. You can see the, the list of individuals there. They cover the, kind of a spectrum of RPS. The handout provides you a visual of the nomination, the application process, a list of the recommended council members, and a map that shows the locations of the recommended council members to kind of give you a visual of the, the spread across the district. We will need a, a school board member as part of that gifted advisory council, so if you can get that, be filled in there. And then, uh, once we have that, we can ask you for approval. Do you have any questions?
No questions? You need a motion?
Move that we approve the gifted advisory council?
It's been moved by Ms. Dorr and seconded by Ms. Owen to receive the action for the establishment of a new gifted and advisory council. Any discussion? Ms. Dorr?
I think this is a great idea, and I think we've, um, we've talked at previous board meetings about how we can increase enrollment specifically in the space program. Um, it's a little lofty right now, we did a tour just to see if we could fill in all, um, and it was great to determine how we can get more families in there, but really in your efforts, I'm excited about it.
Ms. Cosby?
Uh, I have two other questions, um, in terms of the selection process, I mean, you said that people accepted invites or expressed interest. Um, and I'm looking at, at the parents, um, and don't necessarily see parent representation. From some of the various schools that we talked about, we wanted to increase, um, the gifted program, um, specifically in the classroom and certain parts of- Certain questions outside, so can you, is this, is this set in stone, the, the number here, the, the people, or?
So, so these will be, it'll, it'll be an open meeting, so anybody that would like to participate in the meeting can, can join. This is, we, we, it's part of the process to have, you know, a gift, gifted advisory council in place. And so anybody that would like to participate in the process, we welcome them. So if you have recommendations, you know, can you just, you know, work through your, your calendar, and we'll, you know, have some others invited.
Hard question?
The motion was made by Ms. Dorr, seconded by Ms. Owen to receive for action the establishment of a new gifted advisory council, Ms. Cosby? Yes. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Minz Erb?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh. The next item is to receive for action school, uh, receive for action a recommendation to move forward with the renovation of Overby Shepherd Elementary School and movement of the school department in Springs Elementary, during the renovation.
Good evening, um, this is requesting your approval to proceed forward under the proposal we presented at the last meeting in May. Um, it's for three point nine two eight million, uh, with Dyken as the contractor, um, under a national cooperative purchasing agreement. Um, doing that now will allow us to get this work done and get the students back in place on before December twenty second.
I move that we, we, we accept this recommendation to move forward with the renovation of Overby Shepherd.
Need a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Minz Erb. Any discussion? Mr. Krantz?
Yes, ma'am.
So you will provide the board timeline as far as how you want to communicate with the parents?
Right, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hard question?
The motion was made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Minz Erb to accept a recommendation to move forward with the renovation of Overby Shepherd Elementary School, Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Minz Erb?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh. The next item is five point zero five, received for action, a request to lease three simply needy omniscient. Four. Five point zero four.
Thank you, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, before you tonight, here's a, a request for your approval, uh, for the school division to enter into a four-year lease, uh, total over the four years, two hundred ninety-two thousand. Um, this is a replacement of our server system that houses substantially all of our student records, as well as all of our financial records. Student nutrition services, transportation, um, substantially a- all of the information in the school division. Uh, this is a replacement lease. Uh, we've, we've had these, uh, units in place, uh, for the last four years, we're going into the fifth year. Um, this is actually a reduction of what we're paying today. Uh, we're saving about six thousand dollars a year, uh, with this lease, and we are increasing our capacity by about five hundred percent. Uh, this is a, an action that had come before the previous board, uh, back in, uh, back in October, I believe. Uh, for two reasons, it's back before you tonight, we want you to know about it, of course. But, but also, uh, as we got the lease, uh, and reviewed, uh, reviewed the lease, and had it reviewed by our legal counsel. Uh, since this is a tax exempt lease, which means the folks that, that buy these, uh, uh, these investments, uh, they are tax free to them. Uh, there are certain filings that we have to do, so we have to ask for your approval for the resolution that you acknowledged that this is a tax-free lease. So, anyway, before you approve it.
To receive for action, a request to lease three simply needy omniscient.
We have to say something about that we acknowledged that this-
No, ma'am, your action tonight, uh, has this lease attached with it, and it has a resolution. So we'll, well, look at our attorney.
Well-
I, I have the-
Do you have the-
I got the resolution on page thirty-three, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, only the impact statement, it's on board docs.
So-
The, the, um- Resolution of the school board, uh, pursuant to our state code. Um, uh, you recognize that we're incurring an amount not to exceed two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars and two cents, um, by this master equipment lease, and this is, like I said, is included on page thirty-three. I can certainly include this as part of board docs, and that, that way we can, we can approve the resolution as part of, part of the approval. Would you like, would you like to see that?
Yes. Board members, you need to see the resolution as well.
You pay the charge for that.
Board members can look at it as well. Okay, I see, yes.
At the risk of being too technical, um, most investments, you have to pay taxes on your earnings. This particular lease that people invest in this, they don't have-
You're approving the resolution in action.
All right.
With respect to, um, the lease for three simply, simply, which is, I mean, you're approving the, the resolution?
And the lease that we approve the resolution. And the document.
Correct. For the lease. For the, for- She's going, she's going.
For the lease of three simply needy omniscient.
Yes.
I second that.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Dorr to receive the act, receive for action, a request to lease of the-
The resolution?
To approve the resolution. To approve, to receive, to approve the resolution.
For the lease.
For the lease of three simply needy omniscient. Any discussion? So call the question?
The motion was made by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Dorr to approve a resolution for the lease of three simply needy omniscient. Ms. Cosby? Yes. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Minz Erb?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh.
Thank you.
The next item for action is to receive the human resources actions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Human resources actions for approval for this evening are the nomination of seven employees, the change of contract of twenty-eight employees. We have an addendum in front of you. The actions for the addendum for approval are the nomination of three employees and the change of contract of five employees.
Any questions? Need a motion?
To receive or approve the-
To approve what you have.
All right, I'm moving that we approve the human resources department action in the end and the end.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Dorr.
Ms. Erb, I'm sorry.
Ms. Minz Erb to approve the HR action and the addendum. Any discussion? Hard questions?
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Minz Erb?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven oh.
I do have one additional question I want to raise. Um, if it pleases the board, I'd like to request permission to continue hiring of teachers through the summer. As we only have one board meeting for HR action approval, I'd like to request that we allow, um, the HR department to tend to hire teachers throughout the summer.
I move that we approve the recommendation to continue to hire teachers throughout the summer.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen.
Madam Chair, the motion actually has to give the authority to them, since you, you can't just be motion, you're motion to give-
Give administration authority to continue to hire teachers throughout the summer.
That's what I meant, seven, seven.
So it's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Barlow to give HR the authority to hire teachers throughout the summer. Any discussion? Ms. Cosby?
Uh, just a question, so we talked about this briefly our last meeting, with the notice of intent to return. It's aware we now, you gave us an approximation of around eighty-four, in terms of-
So, total for resignations as, uh, this will be effective as of the approval of this agenda, um, two hundred and forty-one, as opposed to two hundred and seventy-five on last school year, so actually go better this school year than we were doing at this time last school year. Uh, retirements are ninety-five for this school year, and we had ninety-six on last school year.
Can you repeat the first, is that a number, please?
Two hundred and forty-one for this school year. Two hundred and seventy-five for twenty fifteen, twenty, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
So it's two forty-one?
Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
The intent?
That is total, so people who have actually resigned submitted their letters of resignation and have been approved, see their HR-
And that's instructional, yeah?
Oh.
Ms. Cosby?
Uh, so, for our teaching staff, what are we looking at in terms of, how many vacancies do we have to fill, how many haven't filled, how many do we have to fill?
We'll have those numbers for you in July. The, the, um, deadline for resignations is June fifteenth, and so we will know the number of vacancies for you in July.
Hard question?
Motion was made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Barlow to give the human resources department the authority to hire teachers throughout the summer, Ms. Young?
Um, can we amend, I'm sorry, I know I can't bring it amendment, but I need to say staff, not just teachers, but if HR, the Richmond House staff.
I amend the motion to say staff.
Did you say staff?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Minz Erb?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item is to receive for action the school or tribal and district activity requests. I have one request, that was from Ms. Minz Erb to distribute her funds through the schools in the third district to use for, um, parent activities, technology, and what was the third item? And it would be approximately six hundred and forty-nine dollars per school. Facilities, it was, country. So her request was for those specific items at the schools in the district.
Need a motion?
I move that we disperse Ms. Minz Erb's funds as she has requested.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Minz Erb to distribute- To approve the distribution of the third district school board funds as requested. Any discussion? Hard question?
Ms. Dorr? Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Minz Erb?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. The next item is to approve the spread one million project, receive for action of some-
The million. Sprint One Million Project.
So, um, there's been, since the board voted on Sprint previously, there've been numerous conversations involving Sprint, the city. Um, and so things have changed on the proposal at this point in time. Basically, the biggest change is that number one, the number of units that are tablets has gone to one thousand. Um, now, to give that in perspective, we will have seventeen hundred freshmen projected in our schools next school year. Um, what we have in units in this year, year one of the agreement, doesn't limit what we'll be in year two. You can ask for, to get additional units. Number two, the initiative really is to provide home internet connectivity for our students and families. It is not a teaching and learning initiative. Um, their program, as they understand in the high schools, they estimate there's five million units that are needed. They're contributing one million units for that five million goal. We've spoken with Sprint, um, they're unable at this time to do additional units just because of the volume that districts that applied for the grant actually exceeded the number of units that they were willing to do this first year. And so a number of districts on the back end of the application process did not get any units this year. What has come through, um, the devices are intended to be used outside of school. They're intended to provide an avenue for our students to access the internet. They are going to have the child protective internet device that Sprint has to ensure that children are not going in places they're not supposed to off of the internet. Um, RPS will not repair the devices. We will develop a process for the, the reissuance of any damaged devices before the tablets. And our plan is to begin it in October, so that it gives us ample opportunity between now and then to ensure that we've got a strong, sound plan for the distribution of those units in a systematic manner. Our intention is not to go with all the schools day one, but to do a small number, probably one. Work out the bugs on that distribution and then depending on that, go to one or two, the second one, and then get to all of them. Um, RPS will only distribute and collect the devices. Um, RPS will not be responsible for breakage in excess of the ten percent replacement devices that, that will be provided by Sprint. The intent, if it's the will of the board to charge a fee on the devices, because we do believe we will have some damage and or lost devices. However, some of our students are not able to pay a fee. Um, so if that is the will of the board, we recommend that there be some community service, potentially, you know, if, if that is the intent. There's no solicitation, so that if at the end of the, of the program, Sprint is not allowed to solicit our students to ask them to partici, you know, to continue to be a customer, that's going to be the student and their family's prerogative.
Also, I would like to add, board members, I reached out to the chair of the Norfolk Public Schools and so you have that in your possession, um, the questions that were, that were asked to the chair, um, what type of agreement did Norfolk have with Sprint? How was the district impacted? What were the pros and cons? What was the targeted, targeted population and how was it rolled out? And they have responses to the questions, so they only. Right, they only have access to three hundred devices. Lines per Norfolk Public School, high schools, total twelve hundred per year for five years. Ms. Minzir.
I also had a chance to speak with, um, somebody from Providence School District that was a part of the pilot. I didn't have a chance to type it up, so it was right before the meeting. Um, they distributed two hundred and fifty devices, uh, in January in two different schools. Um, and only had positive things to say about their experience so far. Um, and actually said that the students were, um, uh, were really taking care of the devices, were extremely appreciative. Um, they've only had maybe three or four that they've had to replace since that time, so I think that was good news. Um, and it sounds like students have reported, um, anecdotally things like being able to use the devices um, for using Google Translate, they have a high Spanish speaking population, or not having to go to the library late at night. And, um, generally speaking, they felt like it's, it's been really good. Um, she gave me a few tips on, on implementation, which I'm happy to share. Um, but generally when I said, has there been anything negative about the program so far? She cited something that was, um, really internal with their, their own team. Um, so it wasn't, um, the, the program at Sprint, she always said Sprint's been really supportive. I, uh, as a part of the technology committee, had a chance to meet with Sprint as well, um, and got a lot of questions answered that Mr. wants to share. Um, and we say that I think we should move forward with the program and get a chance to see how it benefits our students.
Ms. Minzir, can, we need you to provide a written documentation for the record to give to Ms. Lewis. Ms. Cosby. I'm sorry, and then Ms. Owen.
Um, so what will be the, I understand we're not going to be held liable for the breakage over ten percent now.
Yeah.
Um, but what are some of the things that we are going to have to incur costs for, if, if anything?
We believe, David and I, that, um, there will be, you know, potential administrative costs. We don't think that it's a material amount. You know, our biggest concern, when we looked at this project from the very beginning, was on those, that replacement factor. Um, because you don't know what our rate of loss will be. Um, and so that was our, our biggest concern. The other thing that, um, is clear under the, under the, this program, is that it's a year to year. So if the district were to make that decision at the end of the first year that because of issues encountered with the program, the district could back out of, out of the program at that point in time. Or can they elect to, you know, request additional units and continue forward in year two, but then do the same thing, you know, going into year three. So if we encounter things that we're not anticipating, that's a curveball, that the district would have that ability to, to discontinue it at that time.
Ms. Owen.
Mr. Chris, I had asked you last week about camera. There is a camera, right, in the device that is capable of taking video and still pictures.
Well, they've got the Children's Internet Protection Act and in talking to Sprint, there's a capability to turn off things inside the devices and that would be obviously one of the things that we would want to turn off.
Okay, so you have discussed that with them.
Yes, ma'am, we talked to their tech, we talked, we talked to their technical side and their technical side said that within that device, there's a number of things that can be turned off and that is one of the things that can be turned off.
Mr. Barlow.
The last time we considered this, I, I had some, some concerns, namely, I didn't want our teachers to become Sprint salespeople. I thought there was some solicitation language in there. I was encouraged that Sprint, uh, took that off the table, not accommodated that. I was concerned about high breakage rates. We heard that similar programs that have breakage rates as high as thirty-two percent, not just seventy percent. Does encourage to hear that we are not obligated to maintain a certain level, so if we do hit a certain cap, uh, that we're uncomfortable with, we, we don't have to move forward with it. Uh, I was concerned about, uh, us sort of being on the hook for, or a lot of administrative costs and stuff over the course of five years. I'm encouraged that, that this is a year to year deal. And, uh, I think that Sprint has, uh, has done a, a good job of answering a lot of our questions on technology from these heads last week. And, uh, I'm optimistic about the success of the program.
Ms. Cosby.
Um, I do have another question about, so you mentioned we have approximately seventeen hundred, uh, ninth graders, we have a thousand devices.
Exactly.
Um, and, and I know this is based on people who are students who do not have, we're self-reporting that we don't have internet access. And so we are looking at distrib, distribution across the district.
The, the, and, and we're, we're going to come back with the intent, the thought is, is why don't we hit where we perceive our greatest needs are? Um, so, for example, in Armstrong High School, at John Marshall High School, at George Whip High School, for example. Um, that would be approximately six to seven hundred devices. If, if all students move forward with it, then, um, the other devices, we can maybe do it as a program specific type, you know, where, um, it's often, we would have, we've got to do a little, we've been working on this diligently, so we don't have all the details worked out. We're going to have to work out some of these details and come back to y'all as a board, um, either at that July seventeenth meeting or even at the August meeting um, with how, you know, we need to tweak on that, because that does have, need some still, some work to be done. But that's kind of our doing a lot of this.
Ms. Dorr.
My opinion, just wanted to make, to clarify, is that we have, if we want, next year, we can be eligible for an additional amount of devices. But if we say no this year, then we're not eligible to reapply for next year's.
That, that's, well, we lose the option this year and, and based off of the, um, the high number of responses that they receive, it would be, we, we wouldn't be look payable if we, we submitted, yeah.
Ms. Minzir. One other thing that's worth mentioning is that Sprint will assign an implementation project manager, which will be shared across districts to support implementation in RPS. And a part of what they will do is also share best practices across, uh, what happened in other districts. So they will be providing that support throughout the year.
Question, Mr. Krantz.
Ma'am.
So total is fifty-six hundred tablets, is that correct?
Well, the total.
Over the, over the course of five years.
Potential. I mean, right now, the only commitment we got is for a thousand this year. Okay, so we can ask for more in year two, but at this point, no one can say what that number will be. All we've got is a commitment for one year. With a hard limit.
I want to be on the record, I think this is a great idea, but for us to make a decision, uh, or how do we determine who gets the tablets? Um, it has to be equitable, um, want to make sure that the resources are there for all of our students and if we're looking at the ninth grade.
We're looking at seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
Somebody.
Basically, every three students, we give them two of the bodies.
So somebody is going to lose out.
Yes, ma'am.
But I would, my preference would be still, confidence at high school with the highest need.
Right.
When you say Armstrong.
Armstrong, John, John Armstrong, John George Whip would probably be the, number one. But I mean, you know, stick with the academic teams and, and, and everybody, but that's what I believe would probably be at the highest, when it does need us.
One more. Uh, and so with these tablets, we are not going to, because they're primarily for home use.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is what you stated. So we are not going to have the ability to, um, download, customize anything, our instruction, our instructional software. Load that our students, it's going to be internet based.
And I, that certainly wouldn't be the intent, I, we have the ability, obviously, to, to load that. It wouldn't be the intent to teach through that.
Right.
Need a motion?
I move that we approve our gap participation in the Sprint One Million Project for the academic year.
Next amendment. As amended.
It's been moved by Ms. Minzir and seconded by Mr. Barlow to. Ms. Young.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I would, uh, I would inquire of the, uh, patron of the, uh, motion, should be willing to accept a friendly motion to loudly demand to specifically include a loss prevention strategy that Mr. Krantz spoke to. Uh, specifically a fifty-dollar safe deposit or nominal fee uh, that could be offset by any kind of volunteer hours to be determined by staff, uh, the time that to be determined. The objective regards, uh, what Mr. Krantz spoke to a moment ago, my colleague, Mr. Barlow, shared, uh, in his remarks. Uh, like Scott, I shared a lot of same concerns a month ago when I believe he considered this. But I really commend Mr. Krantz and Mr. Myers for working with Sprint and applaud Sprint for working with us in initial, the initial proposal for the benefit of the public, uh, regarding a different kind of device. But, uh, but I'm really encouraged by, uh, opportunity to introduce a thousand tablets. However, in everything that yours truly aims to do in RPS, I aim to encourage accountability. And I think an opportunity to remind all our stakeholders, including our customers, our students, uh, that, uh, candidly, there is no, there is no free lunch, um, is an important lesson. Uh, but I'm also mindful that, uh, as Mr. Krantz said, a lot of our customers do not have that fifty dollars. So I really like the idea of an offset of volunteer hours and or some other kind of substitute in lieu of, uh, of a monetary safe deposit. So I would inquire.
What are you proposing to?
Specifically, propose that we include in the motion a requirement that a safe deposit or nominal fee, fifty dollars, um, per, uh, per device and or student who applied. Um, that, uh, students can, in lieu of fifty dollars, exchange volunteer hours.
So Ms. Minzir would have to accept that amendment, need a motion?
I think fifty dollars is a little bit high. Would you be comfortable with an amendment of tasking the administration to work with a loss prevention policy that we approve at a later date?
I would, uh, I'd suggest that those volunteer, those volunteer hours could more than offset for people. I would agree that for some, some of our customers, that, that would be an earnest ask of them. So I would propose, for example, that if a student was unable, if their family was unable to pay that fifty dollars, that, for example, they could, they could exchange five hours of volunteer service in some kind of capacity in, in the school.
So if you're not accepting this amendment to the motion, then it has to be a separate motion.
Correct.
So if you're not going to do it, oh, sorry. I, I, it's not that I, I think I, I agree with you conceptually, I would love to hear if there are other thoughts to this, but I think we should spend a little bit more time before we nail a dollar amount to it.
Then, Madam Chair, I propose that we give an amendment motion as, as articulated amendment again.
And it's something that the administration.
Could I second his amendment?
Repeat your amendment, Mr. Young.
Repeat your amendment, Ms. Young.
Okay, the motion with the amendment is to approve RPS's participation in Sprint One Million Project for the Academic Year 2017-2018 as amended, and to include a loss prevention strategy requiring a nominal fifty-dollar fee and/or a commitment to serve in a volunteer capacity for no less than five hours. And that amendment is made by Ms. Young. Does she have a second?
Motion failed. Motion to amend has failed.
So the motion on the floor made by Ms. Minz-Ehr and seconded by Ms. Barlow?
Yes.
To approve RPS's participation in the One Million, Sprint One Million Project for the Academic Year 2017-2018 as amended.
Any discussion? Ms. Minz-Ehr?
I'd like to amend my motion. To approve RPS participation in the Sprint One Million Project for the Academic Year 2017-2018 as amended, to include a loss prevention strategy to be created by the administration, to be created by the administration and approved by the board. Right at the beginning of the school year.
Second.
So she's drawing your motion, and you're making another motion. Are you withdrawing your first motion?
Yes. I will draw my first motion, and I am making the second motion. Would you like me to read it again?
No.
Any discussion? Ms. Cosby?
Not so much about the...
What is the new motion?
Just the new motion. I just, I just want to go on the record saying, I know that we don't know what the administrative cost will be right now. And I know you said it was nominal, but if we're distributing across the entire district, I would imagine that we would see some, I guess, just some significant cost for, I am looking forward to that report.
Okay.
In July.
Okay.
So it doesn't get, is it July?
July.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Call the question. Motion was made by Ms. Minz-Ehr, seconded by Mr. Young, to approve RPS's participation in the Sprint One Million Project for the Academic Year 2017-2018 as amended, and to include a loss prevention strategy to be created by the administration and approved by the board. Prior to the start of the study, back here. Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Dor?
Yes.
Ms. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Minz-Ehr?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, thank you.
Next item is to receive the findings of the division level... To receive the findings of the division level review and discuss the memorandum of understanding.
Dr. Staples, Dr. Kennedy. And Mr. Powell. Thank you all for joining us this evening. And we apologize for a little lightness.
It is a dangerous thing if I am by own technology support, so thank you very much. Thank you. Madam Chairman, Madam Board, Dr. Venn, thank you again for indulging us in time on a very busy agenda. And more importantly, thank you for your continued service to the students and staff here in Richmond. This evening, I want to follow up on the earlier presentation that we made a couple of weeks ago, and our ongoing conversation around next steps following the division level review. I also want to say thank you for letting me come a bit late into your meeting, Chairman Page. You were saying it was a bit later. I requested that, thank you. You've allowed me to go through a retirement, make some comments, and run right back up here to it. It worked out very well, so thank you. Joining me this evening is the President of the State Board of Ed, Dr. Billy Kennedy. And I'm going to, at some point, make him stand up here with me. But I've distributed two documents that I'll be referencing as we go. One is labeled a memorandum of understanding, and we'll talk about that briefly. The other is labeled corrective action plan. Please note that both are draft. These are documents that are in preparation. What I'm sharing with you is kind of a point in time as to where we are in the process. Still several months to go, but we thought an update at this point would be helpful for you to understand the connection between the division level review, the corrective action plan, and the memorandum of understanding. So that's what I'm going to try and chat with you about this evening. Now, last time I was here, we shared an overview of the division level review that's already been conducted in Richmond at your request. I remind you that there are five main categories in the review itself. Academics and student success, leadership and governance, operations and support, human resources leadership, and community relations and communications. It's important to note, this is a very comprehensive review. This literally looks at all areas of division level leadership and management, although we're focusing on improving academic outcomes. The purpose of the review is to take a scan across all operations and leadership functions at the division level. The review requires written evidence. So in order for something to be documented on the review document, written evidence has to be provided. So that means when there is a finding. And as a reminder, when we go into a division during this review, we expect that there will be findings, because outcomes aren't where anybody wants them. So having findings is not a surprise. But when there's a finding, it could mean anywhere between a range of things. It could mean that that particular function is not being done at all, that it's not present, it's not evident, and no one knows anything about it. To the other end, that it is being done, but there was no written evidence that could be provided. The reason written evidence is so important is that it institutionalizes practice. With written evidence, we know that that particular process or that particular function is memorialized in a way that it can be passed on should there be turnover, transition, or changes in duties. So as you look through the corrective action plan, we'll be talking about the fact that there wasn't evidence presented to support it, and in some cases, it may mean that they simply have to provide a written procedure to document what's being done. In other cases, it means they actually have to create a procedure. Within these five main categories, each has subcomponents that will provide, that provide detailed guidance for review. So when we look at academic and student success, you see these are the areas within academic student success that we focused on for the division level review. There was student achievement, professional development and support, research and innovation, special education programs. And we have a tool in place that I'll reference there, and then targeted programs. These are subsections under the academic and student success tools. The reason that's important is in a moment, when we look at the corrective action plan, you'll see it is structured to use this outline as its main structure. So you'll see there'll be academic and student success, and there may well be actions on student achievement, and then professional development. The asterisk on these subheadings, and you see one under professional development and support, you see one in research innovation, an asterisk indicates there were no findings during the division level review. So that portion of the academic and student success tools will have no goals in the corrective action plan. There were no findings, in other words, everything was documented that was needed to in that tool. So that's the academic and student success portion. Under leadership and governance, we looked at division organization, mission, vision, and goals, policy management, strategic planning, and board governance. Now, you see a different asterisk on this one under board governance. Because the city board had been newly seated, you had just been seated, many of you at the time of the division review, it was determined that we really should do that aspect of the view later. So we'll come back and do that aspect of the review in March 2018. So there aren't findings under board governance, because that part of the tool wasn't used in the division level review. Under operations and support services tools, you see facilities and maintenance, finance and grant management, legal counsel, student safety and security, transportation, and school nutrition. Again, asterisks on this page indicate that there were no findings, and those areas will not be addressed in the corrective action plan. In the human resources leadership section, you see employee job definitions, compensation and benefits, employee acquisition and retention, employee evaluations, employee development, and employee relations. And then finally, you see the community relations areas broken out into media and marketing, public engagement, and family and community support. What this gives you is a bit more detailed outline of all the areas that were reviewed during the division level review. Any area that had a finding has a corresponding action in the correction, corrective action plan. So it's easy to look at the corrective action plan and know the areas that were identified during the division level review. If you could, we'd like to take just a moment and look at the corrective action plan draft that I shared for you in paper tonight. On the front page, there are a couple of things I'd want to call your attention to. If you look on the left of the cover page, you'll see it says, "Plan developed with assistance from..." One of the important aspects of corrective action plan is that it engages a broad group of constituents in helping to develop responses. The idea is to engage the community. So you see the lists of samples that would be involved in actually building the corrective action plan specifically. Obviously, these won't be done right away. These may take some time. Also, you'll notice that pages two and three are blank. That's your table of contents. We can't complete that until we know the complete link and detail of the plan. So it's a reminder that this is still a draft document. It's a work in progress, and it will develop more over the next few months. Couple of things I'd like to point out in the paper copy I've given you. One of the purposes of a corrective action plan is to try and coordinate many existing efforts. It's not that suddenly Richmond has had a whole new set of corrective action that you haven't been working to in fact address some of the findings in the correct, in the division level review. You already have some things underway. The idea of the corrective action plan is to pull those together in a comprehensive way, so we don't get competing or conflicting plans. And a good example of this can be found on page four of the corrective action plan that I've shared with you. If you look on page four, right in the middle, you see a heading, "Special Education Programs, Division Corrective Action Plan in Place." Richmond is one of the school divisions that our special education office has already been working with as part of their federal monitoring and compliance. So you already have a results-driven accountability corrective action plan for special education. There's no reason for this new corrective action plan to give you duplicate expectations. So this document simply references that for any findings in special ed, you ought to continue to use the accountability corrective action plan from the results-driven scenario previously. You'll see that in a couple of places. I think it's also important to consider that a corrective action plan will have both short-term and long-term actions. Some of these actions can be done as soon as possible. I made reference earlier that you might actually have something that you're doing, and you simply haven't institutionalized it in writing. There's no reason to wait. You can start doing that right away and get that committed, so that in fact, if there is transition or turnover, those procedures or those actions are clearly documented for the next person in line. So some things can be done quickly. Some might wait for the completion of your superintendent search, where there are long-term actions, where you really want that superintendent on board with that leadership team to make sure that they have an opportunity to provide input and buy in on the plan. An example of what will likely be a long-term process is found on page nine of the corrective action plan. On page nine, right at the top, under facilities and maintenance components, you see that one of the plan, one of the requirements is to develop, implement, and monitor an evidence-based capital improvement plan. I need not tell you, that's not something you'll get done in two or three weeks. That's going to require a long-term effort at both identifying need and working cooperatively with your funders to make sure that they support the CIP and its process. So that's an example of a long-term goal. It is not atypical for a corrective action plan to be in effect for five years. We don't expect immediate action on every step. Remember, this was a comprehensive review, looking at all aspects of the division's operations, and we think it is more likely that you'll get some things done early and other things done late. There are some things that are already underway, and I would call your attention to page ten of the corrective action plan. If you look on page ten, at the very bottom, under, it's in the middle, but it's the last one on that sheet, under transportation components evaluation tool, conduct a fleet operations assessment. This is done by staff at the Virginia Department of Education. We're already working to schedule that with your staff, to do a comprehensive fleet review to determine where all fleet vehicles are in compliance and where they're out of compliance, and building a plan to respond to that. So there's no need to wait on those kinds of things. Those kinds of things would move forward. And then above it, under student safety and security, the essential action at the bottom of that action says, "Develop, implement, and monitor a process to analyze discipline data and determine appropriate next steps." You can certainly begin the process of reviewing that data and beginning to think through how you'd want to respond to that in a corrective action plan. So those were just some examples from the plan itself. The corrective action plan, as you see, is a draft. The state board will be looking at it. Our staff at the Department of Ed will be working with your staff here, because as you look across the plan, you see only the essential actions are... because as you look across the plan, you see only the essential actions are listed. We've still got to identify who is responsible, who monitors the person who's responsible, what the target date is for completion of that essential action, and then what documentation is required to show evidence that there's either progress or completion of that action step. So what you see is there is a pretty comprehensive set of essential actions in your corrective action plan. That's one part of the response to the division level review. If I may, I'd like to get Dr. Kennedy up because the other piece is an important agreement, and that's the memorandum of understanding. Dr. Kennedy is president of the State Board of Education, is going to be working with the ultimate development of the memorandum of understanding, and I'll yield the podium to you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you again for allowing us to be for you as a partner in the important work that you do to try to serve children across Richmond City schools. I'd like to preface my comment about the memorandum of understanding, just talking about what we have learned as a state board. We clearly understand when we have schools making efforts, but progress not being sufficient. We've learned some things that really help us to become more informed around what might be areas that need to give attention. One is lack of agreement on what is important. It's one thing to come to a board meeting and identify what you think to be critical. But systemically, what we have learned is that boards and superintendents, when they really don't have a focused plan that identifies not 15 to 20 things, we usually say if it's 15 to 20 things, it's not important things, just list. Generally, important things are about three to five things that are critically important and that you can closely monitor, and you can have robust deep conversations. The memorandum of understandings for us is that we learned these things. One is it's very important, the state board, the Department of Ed, school board, and school leadership team have constant communication around not only what they've agreed to do, but the implementation and the extent to which feedback is saying they're moving in the right direction or not, they're moving at the pace that you thought or not. And that conversation needs to be public. We used to bring people before the board. We find out that that really sometimes doesn't give us the best kind of conversation. Instead, people posture on both sides, and the end result is it doesn't really do very much to build a change. What we do think is having a work session where we have a conversation, and you're not taking action, but you really are probed to find out that you're aligned with the conversation, aligned with the work. And when you don't understand something, either board or certainly local board, you can bring that to everyone's attention. I think the other part we've learned, Rob, is relationships. It's critically important, the relationship between the board as a whole and the board with the superintendent. What we have learned in working with school divisions where they can't move the needle as fast as they like in terms of improving student achievement, the relationship itself seems to be as though it being a relationship of the whole, this relationship with each member. And what happens in that case is that instead of it being one voice, what happens in schools and across the system is they hear many voices, and they have to figure out which voice will be one. As a state board, we also have very robust, and Dr. Staples can attest to this, we have very robust conversations, agreement and disagreement publicly. But once we make a decision, it's one voice. It's not the president's voice. It's the board's voice. I articulate it as the president, or the vice president could do that, or any other board member would be asked questions. It would be that same voice. It's critically important, not only to the superintendent, it's important to people in schools. The relationships that we realize are most important, superintendent and board, superintendent staff and schools, and then school leaders and teachers and students, and of course parents. Those relationships have to be aligned around the most important things, and everyone knows what that is. So the MOU is what the board will do. We'll have conversations, the board president and possibly the vice president along with the state superintendent will meet with the board and certainly leadership team around the work and clarity around the work. One thing that was mentioned by Dr. Staples earlier is the whole issue about having a plan, vision and mission. We all have the same mission. Public schools and religion are designed to make certain kids can be successful in school and be prepared for success after school, and that they can develop their full potential. Now how you word that is up to you, but the vision for Richmond is bigger than that. And you have to be in agreement that that vision is not just one that you hold, but this community would hold beyond you, and that the work would be multi-year, trying to make sure you make progress toward that. So the MOU really is not just a document that you sign. It's a working document that informs what each player's role is, and how important those roles are if aligned appropriately. If not aligned, you find out that again, you work real hard, but you don't make progress. And generally, what happens is that people begin to point fingers. With our state board, we don't have the constituents that you have. Whenever you go to the grocery store, someone's going to ask you a question. If you're in church, or if you're at a little game, people begin asking you questions. It's helpful once you have an aligned, a common vision and mission, and a plan that really speaks to what the responsibilities are of superintendent, the board, and certainly the state board and the state superintendent. You can articulate messages that really will be common across whoever speaks and whatever they interpret to you. We are here as partners. Your children are our children. If they're successful, we all benefit. If they're not successful, none of us benefit. There is no joy in Richmond not having every student being successful in school. There is no joy. Our joy is when they have success, you know that success, and it's building on things that you've learned and you continue to make that move. We usually say that you don't get a chance to pick the adult that you want to serve even when you're older. It has happened to hope that the person that you need was one who's taught not only to be skilled in what they do, but to be a good citizen that cares about others. So what you do affects everyone in the Commonwealth, and what we do affects everyone in the Commonwealth. And I think because you're here, and you're here because of an electorate that said you are committed to that work, we want to be partners with you. So thank you.
Dr. Kennedy, thank you so much. Just last piece of information. Projective timeline, just a little later this week, the entire state board will take their first look at the memorandum of understanding. They'll begin to have dialogue, discussion, as Dr. Kennedy indicated. They are not hesitant to engage in discussions around improving schools. We anticipate that at their next meeting in July, they would approve an MOU that would come to you. And at that same time, Richmond staff and Department of Ed staff will begin to hand details on corrective action plan, including some initial stakeholder input. I think Dr. Kennedy eloquently spoke to how important the state sees this, and I want to applaud you as a board, as a school division, as a community for making it clear that you see a sense of urgency in doing this work by requesting the division level review, and by asking if you could get started in the work around the corrective action plan as soon as possible. So that's our timeline. That's the corrective action plan. That's the MOU. We'd be happy to answer any questions if you had them. But any findings in the review you will see has an essential action in the corrective action plan. My chair members and the board, Dr. Bedden, thank you so much for the opportunity to share.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time and sharing this information with the board, and we welcome the collaboration and the partnership.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Any questions, Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like my chair, like to convey my gratitude to Dr. Staples and Dr. Kennedy for the opportunity to partner, to adopt your nomenclature. Really excited about it, expertise that you bring to the table, and it's long overdue, and I'm anxious to get started. I do have one question for you pertinent to the MOU. And specifically, if I may inquire of you if the Virginia Department of Education allows for, provides for persons with CEO background or military leadership to serve in the capacity of superintendent, if there is a track that allows or accommodates those kinds of persons.
Mr. Young, thank you. There are four ways to approach licensure of a division superintendent. Area four, or the fourth one, allows for what we would call a non-traditional approach through that, looking at comparable experience in industry or in some other field. One key to the fourth component for licensure of superintendent is that that person has to be indicated to the department as the preferred candidate of the board for hire, and then we initiate the process to do that. But that is possible, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. And I have not been shy about sharing with my constituents that I think that we need a new approach. And so I was a little curious as to why the MOU, considering what you just shared, would preclude that option should a vacancy occur in RPS?
The intent, what you have before you is the draft MOU, which is built on a standard template. The state board will certainly be engaging in conversations with you to go forward. I wouldn't want to imply to you that you're looking at a final document, so I think that would be both typical and traditional.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Dor.
Thank you also for being here. I think we're all, I'm personally looking forward to a partnership with you all. What is the best, if we do have specific feedback on the MOU, what is the best way to deliver that? Should we funnel through Ms. Page and get it to you all?
If that's possible, it would be difficult for us to engage with individual board members to write, and I think Dr. Kennedy's comments about speaking with one voice is the board is important. So if Chairman Page funnels those comments to us, then certainly we can share those with the state board.
And just another question about process. On the corrective action plan, we're not going to be voting on anything related to this. This is, this is a work in progress.
That's correct. Correct. Thank you.
So board members, we will follow by outstanding process as far as communication. Mr. Barlow?
So I think the two key areas that showed up in the MOU that I found a little more prescriptive than I expected, first was the one that Mr. Young brought up, which was detailing in more, I guess with more detail than I would necessarily expect for the selection of a superintendent. Another piece I see here is about approval of all purchase orders or contracts involving state and federal funding. Is that, is that really typical, or would there be a dollar threshold or something along those lines? Or would every single, the expectation would be every single purchase order contract that we do work?
No, it is typical to review all of those because it's a standards of quality compliance requirement to look at both federal and state funds. Local funds are certainly ones that we wouldn't monitor, but because of the responsibility of the state, we would look at both of those, and we actually will have someone available as an employee of the Department of Ed to do that. So it should not create a backlog in the work. They simply review them prior to them coming to the school board for final approval. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Chairman Page, I see.
The next item is your other informational items, and those documents were just provided on board ops for your review. Next item is the business.
As this is my last meeting, I'd like to maybe as part of the business share some thoughts since I would be going ahead.
In January 2014, I arrived as the newly selected superintendent of Richmond Public Schools to find the current state affairs. In RPS, there'd be a transition and in some areas disarray, including staffing, facilities, lack of basic systems, and organization structure. The senior leadership team had many vacancies and was comprised of almost all temporary slash interim employees. My first daunting task was to present FY15 proposed budget to the school board within two weeks of my arrival. This and future budgets, presentations, how I worked on FY15 to FY17, received multiple compliments from board members, colleagues, citizens, city council members regarding the depth of knowledge regarding RPS needs to be acquired in a short period of time. As we began to work on rebuilding the school division, it had been stripped of many basic components to be affected. We did so with an eye towards building systems versus just trying to put out fires. We still overshadowed much of the basic work we were attempting to perform. While many areas needed improvement, some and many documented in our 38-page, three-year cumulative accomplishment report. The three most pressing issues were academics, which everything impacts, ironically what you heard here tonight, facilities, and human resources. The leadership team was tasked with developing a plan of action around these three areas by not only the school board, but in some cases, the city of Richmond leadership. As a result, we developed academic improvement plan, the facilities improvement plan, and commissioned the council of great city schools to conduct an audit of our human resources practices, which resulted in an implementation plan developed in partnership with several of our business partners representing small and Fortune 500 companies in the area. Within less than a year, we started and completed multiple reviews of key division functions. In December 2014, we received HR audit findings from the council of great city schools and began the development of an action plan with our external corporate partners in June 2015. January 2015, academic improvement plan was presented to the school board, and following April of 2015, we presented the facilities need report as requested. The purpose of the academic improvement plan was to accelerate the progress of all student groups in Richmond Public Schools in meeting or exceeding targeted standards. The goal of the work was to increase academic achievement and reduce achieving gaps between and among all student groups and reach proficiency in academic standards by developing an FMAA plan with short and long-term impact that focus on five core practices: student learning, staff selection, instructional tools, monitoring, and recognition. The plan was grounded in research-based practices from ACT, American College Testing's National Center for Educational Achievement. It became painfully clear to us that we were facing very steep odds of moving the needle forward because 22 schools were already in the pipeline headed towards the status of being denied accreditation when we arrived, with many, if not all, having at least one or more areas below 40% pass rate and not able to meet the standard of 70 or 75% passing rate on SOL schools within one or two years. The growing high needs student population, 25 million less funding than in 2009, but we now have more students, an increase in standards of learning assessment because the test is significantly harder than it was in 2009. The AIP provided a composite snapshot of current academic progress and a systemic approach to ensure that all RPS students graduate prepared for college and careers in the community. Prior to establishing new levels, we considered the current state of RPS in terms of student performance and collective professional capacity of our teachers and administrators. Additionally, considerations included review of features of the then-active strategic plan developed by the previous school board that were relevant to improving teaching and learning, as well as structures and systems that were already, that were already in place that would facilitate accelerating improvement. We also identified structures which needed to be developed to support the work of schools and the resources that we had, as well as those that we needed and wanted to increase achievement, and the stakeholders who previously contributed, as well as those who would be contributing and monitoring the work. The plan is adopted by the school board, requesting an investment of $23.5 million over three years. As reported earlier today, the plan had only received approximately 23% with VDOE to review evidence of progress in select Richmond City schools and plan next steps. In August of 2015, I along with select leadership team members, discussed with Virginia Department of Ed staff our data and the possible benefits of a division level review. During this and other meetings, RPS leadership indicated that additional level plan would be more beneficial for systemic change given the number of schools, as you heard earlier, twenty-two, already headed towards denied status and the limitations of resources and staff available to support those schools. VDOE also shared that division level review model was being revised, which took from 2015 to now, it finally coming to happen. In the spring of 2016, I again discussed with VDOE our division data, which clearly provide evidence of little to limited academic progress, indicating the need for a division level review. In October 2016, I presented and received approval from School Board to support administration's recommendation to submit a board approved formal request to VDOE to conduct a division level academic review, which was a new version they rolled out as part of our effort to focus our work to provide an independent review of needed changes in resources and to formulate as well as validate the need for systemic approach to improvement. The local board approval and further discussion with VDOE was agreed to proceed with the plans for Richmond Public Schools division level academic review. In November 2016, the Virginia Board of Education approved the request for the DLR review. A team of VDO staff was here from March 6th through March 10th, 2017. Similar to our efforts to promote systemic change in special education, which ironically you heard about tonight, with the results-driven accountability we requested, which we were the first in the Commonwealth to do that, RPS became the first school division in the Commonwealth to participate in a new division level academic review, which focused on the five areas that you heard earlier, no need to repeat those. During our October 2016 board meeting, which can be viewed on board docs, we articulated the following reasons for requesting a division level academic review. Many RPS schools were already in the pipeline of a process towards not meeting requirements because Virginia at the time had all or none standard for accreditation. We tried to create and staff a local office of school improvement, which became overwhelming and too daunting for them to support our schools. VDOE, with our assistance, also many other school divisions, has started work on a growth process model rather than all or none. We developed division academic improvement plan, but as you heard earlier, funding was provided the first year, with zero funding the following consecutive years. The large number of schools in need of assistance, the lack of our capacities to support our schools, while recovering from financial challenges, staffing limitations, turnover, structural deficiencies, increased needs of student populations, et cetera. This will become hopefully part of the school division's comprehensive improvement plan. It was also to provide a review of the five major areas, and because change is difficult and a difficult process. During my tenure superintendent, I have attempted to create a climate of continuous improvement, transparency in our performance, and systemic approach to improvement that is not driven by who we know, but who can do the job and who and what needs to be done to support students. Unfortunately, oftentimes it appears that the transparency of data becomes a launching pad for blame or a hammer to despair versus a part of the plan-to-enact process. A prime example this year was a presentation of the mid-year academic performance report, which was predominantly about formative assessments results, like our measures of academic progress, meant to provide guidance and inform our teachers on what students have learned and still need to know so they can adjust their teaching versus a summative end-of-year assessment like the SOL. As I am a tenure with RPS, I encourage RPS to continue to work with a clear vision, ironically, that was stated, I'm surprised, and one that does not make the entire measure of success about the SOL test, but about the whole student progress, because testing is not the measure of a school or student's success. I hope all can agree that our students' academic performance challenges didn't just start within the past three years, but our cumulative impact of multiple years of inadequate opportunities, inadequate resources, and inequities. We continue to communicate that change is a process, not a declaration, and poof, it all of a sudden happens. While I recognize time is not my ally in this position, I hope that no one really thought that change could happen within two years, definitely not systemic or sustainable change. The experience that we've tried to grow within the last couple of years by increasing our students' CTE opportunities, and finding our experiences, exposure to oral language, dual-language degree programs, which now our students can graduate with an associate's degree, and of course, supports in the area of social-emotional learning have been a high priority. I will end with this observation: if we do not address the trauma, social-emotional needs of all involved in RPS, and I mean all, that doesn't mean just our students, our staff are subject to it too, and our families, and surrounding school communities, we will still not make progress needed to sustain continuous and progressive school improvement. You show me a struggling school, and I will more than likely be able to show you a struggling community. Schools can't do it alone, and I'm sure we can all agree that one person can't do it alone. We, and I want to emphasize "we," and repeat, we, are RPS. Whatever happens going forward, let's be committed to that plan and do it with fidelity and do it with the best interest of our children and staff and the communities, so that there is success and we don't keep repeating the cycle. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, I just want to take a moment to say thank you to our superintendent, to Dr. Beden. It would be no surprise that this school board member, first as a candidate, had some differences of opinion, and that's okay, because I don't know any superintendent that would sit in that seat, and I wouldn't have a different spin. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for working tirelessly on behalf of the twenty-four thousand some students of Richmond Public Schools. I sent you an email once, and in that email, paraphrasing, I said, "No one can ever accuse you of not working your tail off." And I remind everyone of that this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Owen? My name is Barlow.
Thank you, Dr. Beden. And I read that from the bottom of my mouth. I know that you care so deeply for the children in the school system, and that is what we're all about. I'd also like to thank Dr. King, although she's not here, but she's also moving on, and I think she has also done excellent work on behalf of the children. So, that's all. Thanks.
Dr. Beden, I also want to take the opportunity to thank you for your tireless work over the past few years on behalf of our district. I think you had unfortunately one of the most difficult jobs in the state, guiding a new school district with many challenges, under-resourced district, a district that in some ways has been a bugger for generations, and it is a lot to ask anyone to change, change the direction of the school district like ours in the course of a few years. But I want to thank you for all the efforts you put in and the successes that you have accomplished for us to build off of as we continue to improve and serve our district. So thank you, Dr. Beden.
Well, as the board chair, I would like to thank you for all of your contributions that you have made to the district, and we wish you, wish you well going forward. Best of luck. Next item.
The next item is closed.
Madam Chair, pursuant to personnel, section 2.2-3711, subsection A, section 1, code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, amended and moved to the suitable city rate for meeting closed session, the wise, discussed perspective candidate term planning assignment provision of orders, motion, salary, displaning, resignation of employees, division, point of distribution of the reason, the gentleman's statement, state reelection list.
Second. Is we move, Ms. Young, second in my office. Ms. Owen, we are now be closed. Calling the Friday.